Good evening, welcome to the Lompoke City Council Meeting. We didn't have a closed session, so we don't have a report. There's something new and different. And now we will have roll call.
Councilmember Homsdahl?
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Lingle?
Here.
Mayor Potem Ashley Costa?
Present.
Mayor John Lynn?
Here.
And now this evening for our invocation Pastor Bert Langdon. And if you'd all please rise.
Dear God, I need to talk with you a bit. I'm doing the invocation of the city council meeting and I need your help because I don't know what each member of the council is facing in their own lives and how that affects their decisions tonight. So bless them, each of them, plus the clerk and the attorney and the administrator. And God, I ask your special blessings upon those in attendance tonight to participate and to discuss agenda items, that each will be considerate of each and every person in the chamber. So God, thank you for this conversation. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation, on its own, indivisible, and veritable, just as all. I didn't turn my microphone on. On September 30th, I made a presentation of a proclamation, which was yesterday, to the Lompoke Victory Outreach Church in honor of their 20th anniversary in Lompoke. And when I make my mayor's report at the end, I'll cover that in a little more detail. And now we have two proclamations. And the first one is Fire Prevention Week. Chief? A proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the city of Lompoke is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are in greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,500 people in the United States in 2011, according to the latest research from the nonprofit Fire Industry Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States respond to more than 370,000 home fires annually, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of death in reported home fires in half, and residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, and fire departments responded to more than 156,000 cooking fires annually between 2007 and 2011. And whereas two of every five home fires start in the kitchen, and unattended cooking was a factor in one-third of the reported cooking fires. Fifty-seven percent of the reported non-fatal home cooking fire injuries occurred when the victims tried to fight the fire themselves. And whereas children under the -- excuse me, under five face a higher risk of non-fire burns associated with cooking, and Lompoke residents should stay in the kitchen when frying food on the stove top, keep a three-foot kid-safe zone around cooking areas, and keep anything that can catch fire away from stove tops. And whereas the city's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire inju -- injuries through prevention and protection education, and Lompoke residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2013 Fire Prevention Week theme, Prevent Kitchen Fires, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution while cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now therefore I, John H. Lynn, Mayor of the city of Lompoke, California, do hereby proclaim October 6th through the 12th as Fire Prevention Week throughout our city, and I urge all citizens to check their kitchens for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices during Fire Prevention Week, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Lompoke Fire Department, including an open house. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As the mayor mentioned, on the 5th, which is this coming Saturday, it is our annual open house. We utilize that opportunity to kick off Fire Prevention Week. Last year's open house, we saw almost 1,000 people. Most of those were children. This year, it's bigger, better, more interactive educational opportunities. We've expanded the area of the displays, and we are in fact going to be putting on demonstrations of what happens when you're not safe in the kitchen. So hopefully everybody here and everybody watching at home will come and join us from 10 to 2 at the South G Street Station, and free food.
A proclamation for Bullying Awareness Month, October 2013. And I want to preface this by saying this is the most difficult proclamation to read because our godson took his life because of bullying. Whereas the city of Lompoke has an interest in promoting the social and economic well-being of its citizens and employees, and safeguarding our schools and community, and fostering an environment that holds promise and security. And whereas that well-being depends upon the existence of healthy, productive employees working in safe and abuse-free environments, and safe physical and emotional environments in which our children can learn and thrive. And whereas surveys and studies have documented the stress-related health consequences of individuals caused by exposure to adverse environments, each and each day, an estimated 160,000 children refuse to go to school because they dread the physical and verbal aggression of their peers, and the loneliness that comes from being excluded and made the target of rumors, cyberbullying, and so many other things. Many more students attend school in a chronic state of anxiety. And whereas abusive work environments can create costly consequences for workers, for employers, including reduced productivity, absenteeism, turnover, employee health-related expenses, and if left unchecked, cost of litigation. It is important that we acknowledge and heighten awareness about the serious issues and the negative effects of bullying, including the long-term damage it can cause to our youth, as well as the risks of teenage suicide. Amen. Whereas protection from abusive work in educational environments should apply to every citizen regardless of race, color, gender, national origin, or disability. Now therefore I, John H. Lynn, Mayor of the city of Lompoke, California, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2013 as Bullying Awareness Month, and urge all citizens of Lompoke to make providing a safe, physical, and emotional environment a significant goal and a personal responsibility, a personal responsibility for each and every one of us. The problem will not go away unless we are involved in the solution. And you think it won't happen, and it does. And another friend of mine, his son took his life because of bullying at work. And this was an adult with a number of years on the job. So it can happen anywhere. And the solution is, when you see it happen, get in the middle. Stop it. It's not right. The reverend would say, do unto others as he would happen to you. Come on down.
Oh, I'm ready when you're ready.
Yeah, I'm ready. Come on down.
I don't see why they interrupt you.
No, you're fine. Come on.
I'm Rebecca Lee.
Hi Rebecca.
Thank you.
Get it a little lower for you.
Oh, thank you. Way the California Healthy Workplace Advocates. Thank city of Lompoke to help raise awareness at the local level so we can encourage our state lawmakers to introduce the Healthy Workplace Bill. We need a law that will correct and prevent bullying in the workplace because we all deserve a bully-free workplace. Simply said, it's the right thing to do. In 2012, 55 California cities and counties proclaimed the third week of October as Freedom from Workplace Bully Week. And this year, we have 35 cities and counties committed so far. And also, we have 35 other states throughout the United -- throughout the nation. This is a national event. So so far, we have 35 other states sponsored this event. So thank you again for your support.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, city staff, and committee audience, while I do not have status report tonight, I would like to say that this is my last night, the last city council meeting prior to my retirement. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the city council. It's been my honor and pleasure serving you. The season -- my season as a city employee began on October 11th, 1993. And my 20-year journey has afforded me many experiences and memories that I will take with me on my retirement. A successful career is not about one's individual efforts, but about the collective team efforts and the individuals that serve as part of that team and make up that team. And so tonight, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank and acknowledge those whom I've had the greatest pleasure serving and working with. The current and former mayors, city council members, city attorneys, city clerks, city department heads, city employees, commissioners, committee members, and board members, foundation members, and city volunteers, and community members. Thank you all for making a difference in my life, and I'm most proud of being a part, having been a part of the city team. And I am certain that city council, you will have future successes working collectively with interim city administrator Theresa Gallivan and our strong team of department heads and city employees. Thank you, and God bless you.
I'm pretty sure that's the most you've ever said. Absolutely. Okay, staff requests and announcements. Oh, no. If she gave a long speech, you have to at least say something. Oh yeah, this is it. You have to at least say nothing to report.
There's nothing to report.
Two firsts in one council meeting. Okay, oral communications. This is five minutes to talk to us about anything you want. If you are here to speak on an item that's on the agenda, there's only one, please wait if you can. If you're here to talk about something on the consent calendar, this is your moment. Everybody, race for the microphone. There's no race. Okay, we'll close oral communications and we'll come back for the consent calendar. The consent calendar are our kind of mundane things. So this evening, we have approval of the minutes of September 17th, approval of expenditures, payroll voucher of 1.1 million, and two expense vouchers of 1.3 million. I confess, I didn't remember to look all the way through, so if there's a check for a Lompoke lock and safe or Smitty's towing, I hereby abstain. Final exceptions of Project FY11-S-1, the Olive Avenue Emergency Street Repair. I'm not sure we could call it an emergency repair since we had to wait for the government for, was it 25 years? Three years. Number four, final acceptance of Project FY09-S2, the Sidewalk Infill Project for Cycle Two Federal Safe Routes to School Program. Kids are having a great time bicycling down the new sidewalks. Item five, vacating a portion of a public utility easement at 701 West Central Avenue in the Walmart tract that we no longer need. Item six, a property lease agreement with RL Johnson Construction for property located at 1107 1129 South V Street that they've leased for a number of years. Item seven, ordinance number 1576-sub-13, Amendment of the Lompoke Municipal Code Title 15 by adding to Chapter 15 dot 72 grading, a summary of action. Item number eight, a text amendment, TA13-01, summary of action, amending the zoning ordinance to allow cottage food operations. Operator permit, planning commission division file CUP13-01. Those are both second readings. And number nine, approval of the interim employment agreement for the interim city administrator with Theresa Gallivan. And is there any item a council member would like to pull? Seeing none, I'd accept a motion.
I move you accept.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
And, and, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mayor Lynn, I will be voting on the motion but would like to abstain from consent calendar item number four.
Okay, so we'll divide the motion and we'll vote on all the items except number four, and then we'll come back and vote on that.
Mr. Mayor, you can do one vote, just have the record note that council member cost abstained.
We'll do what he said. Any other discussion? Could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0 with one abstention on item four. And now we're going to go to adoption of the groundwater management plan, public here item number 10. Pretty exciting stuff.
Larry, can you do me a favor and turn the lights off so we?
Oh, she's got you.
All right. Honorable mayor, members of the council, I'm going to be discussing the proposed groundwater management plan. I also have a representative from our consultant here, Ken Loy from West Yotes. We're going to be teaming up with the presentation. And when I'm finished, I'm just going to give you one correction to the plan. The city's groundwater management plan is in compliance with the California Water Code. A couple sections are mentioned there. One specifically pertains to Lompoke because our plan deals specifically with just the section of the water service area within the city limits, and we are within the Lompoke groundwater basin and specifically the Lompoke Plain. And it overlies the Lompoke groundwater basin part of the DWR basin. The next slide, and I'm sorry, oh, I do have my pointer. I'm going to try to point out, if you take a look at the slide, the light yellow -- wait a minute. The light yellow which I'm circling there is the Lompoke service area which is in the The next slide deals with primary purposes of the plan. The plan was developed to just further our goal of maintaining a sustainable, reliable, high-quality groundwater supply, to provide mechanisms for cooperation with other local agencies managing groundwater, to meet the requirements of the California Water Code, and most importantly, the last one, to implement the existing monetary -- monitoring agreements that we have in place, and those are for the Santa Inez River watershed and the Lompoke groundwater basin. And those are agreements with United States Geological Survey. The next slide, I'm not going to go into detail, I'm going to highlight some of these. Some of the primary objectives were to state the city's overall groundwater management goal, to document basin management objectives, which Ken is going to be reviewing, to establish baseline conditions for the portion of the groundwater basin, again, the Lompoke Plain that the city services, to provide a mechanism for continued collection of groundwater and aquifer information, to establish a framework for reviewing potential changes with respect to the baseline conditions, establish management actions for updating the plan as conditions change, and to maintain consistency with the California Water Code, and in the future to fulfill a requirement that a plan has to be attached to the next urban water management I'm not going to be reviewing all of these dates, but I'm going to highlight some of the dates in the development of the groundwater management plan schedule. In December, on December 6th of 2011, we came to council with a public hearing to consider development of a groundwater management plan. Then within the year 2012, we began to develop the plan and primarily draft basin management objectives. On November 13th, 2012, we held a public workshop to discuss some preliminary basin management objectors -- objectives. We did invite all the stakeholders there. We had representatives from the primary ones, the base, the prison, Vandenberg Village, Community Services District, Mission Hills, and others. Then from December 2012 to May 2013, we developed the plan and noticed all of these. Throughout this time, the Utility Commission, which is involved with our department, water waste, water electric, and solid waste, was up to date and were reviewing the plan. Then on July 3rd, 2013, we did hold another public meeting and we, with the stakeholders, and we reviewed the draft plan. Then we had the plan noticed, brought it back to Utility Commission, and on, during August 2013, the Utility Commission did recommend that the plan be brought to city council for approval. Today, I'm before you here with a public hearing to consider adoption of the plan, and assuming that you do adopt the plan, then within 35 days, we will send that plan to Department of Water Resources. Our overall groundwater management goal for this plan, again, is to work cooperatively with basin stakeholders and the public to maintain a sustainable, reliable supply of high-quality groundwater for the beneficial use of city of Lompoke service area and the surrounding areas. And the basin management objectives do support this goal. I'm going to turn it over now to Ken Loy, and he's going to review the objectives.
Thank you, Susan. Before I get started with the basin management objectives, I want to say just a few words about why the city has prepared this groundwater management plan, just to make that clear. And one of the reasons is that it's, in a sense, it's a requirement under the California Water Code. It's not a hard and fast requirement, but it's a requirement if you're going to get grants or grant funding or loans that are administered by California Department of Water Resources and appropriated after the year 2002. So it's a very important document from the standpoint of looking forward into the future and looking for sources of funding for capital improvement projects that involve groundwater resources. That's one thing. The second is that it, again, under the California Water Code, if you use groundwater as your source of supply, if you're an urban entity like the city of Lompoke, and you use groundwater as your urban supply, you have to have an urban water management plan. You're probably familiar with that. You would prepare one every five years. And you're, according to the Water Code, supposed to attach your groundwater management plan to that. And with adoption of this plan, you'll be able to do that now. And then the third reason is, I would say, equally important, and that is that the plan pulls together the existing institutional and water resources regulatory framework that you have been involved with for decades in the city of Lompoke. And these are the state water resources control board orders, the settlement agreement, all of the legal and state water resources control board proceedings that you've been involved with are basically built in and documented in this plan. So it's a one-stop resource for information on all of those documents that affect groundwater and the Santa Inez River watershed. So with that said, I'm going to get into the basin management objectives. And these basin management objectives are just simply the objectives that are developed to support the overall groundwater management goal. And the city has developed, along with input from stakeholders and members of the public at previously convened meetings, they've developed five basin management objectives, and these are somewhat aligned with guidance that is put forth by California Department of Water Resources. So they're tailored specifically to Lompoke, but they fall in the general categories that are required by the state. Okay, so the first one has to do with protecting and maintaining groundwater quality within the city service area for the benefit of basin groundwater users. And that's an important one because groundwater quality is an issue. I want to point out again that the plan specifically addresses the city's water service area. But if you look at the wording of this objective, it's for the benefit of the whole basin, which is a good thing. All right, and the next one has to do, this is basin management objective two, and it has to do with maintenance of groundwater elevations that result in a net benefit to basin groundwater users. And again, the plan implementation, any actions that would come from implementation of the plan would be specific to the water service area of the city only, but the decisions would be based on the net benefit to the overall groundwater basin. The next one has to do with minimizing the risk of land subsidence due to groundwater withdrawal, and this is a situation that's not very likely in the Lompoke groundwater basin, but this is one that the state wants to see. And it has to do with subsidence of the land surface due to groundwater pumping, and this has been a problem in certain parts of California. The San Joaquin Valley has had something like 30 feet of land subsidence over the years. years, but it's not very likely here. But the city has got a basin management objective that addresses this particular issue. And the next two basin management objectives, four and five, I'm going to talk about together because in my mind, they're really almost one and the same. And they basically have to do with interactions between stream flow in the Santa Inez River and water quality in the Santa Inez River, and the resulting changes in groundwater elevations and groundwater quality that would come about due to changes in the flow, frequency of flow, and the water quality in the stream. And the reason that these two objectives are so important is that replenishment of the groundwater basin comes from the intermittent stream flow in the Santa Inez River. And that's a little bit of a segue back into the institutional framework, and I just want to remind you that your institutional framework existed before this groundwater management plan was written. All the plan does is build off of that existing framework and bring it all together into one spot that you can go to and say, "We've done it." And now I'll go into the plan components, and these are the foundation of the plan. I'll go through them quickly. The first one has to do with local agency coordination, and there are pages and pages of planning that are written about each of these categories that I'm talking about, stakeholder involvement, public outreach, those are the kinds of things, like advertising meetings, getting public input, working with Santa Inez Water Conservation, Santa Inez River Water Conservation District, Vandenberg Village Community Service District, Mission Hills Community Service District, et cetera. The monitoring program is essentially what you're already doing and paying for with your cooperative programs with the USGS that involve both the groundwater and stream flow monitoring. Groundwater sustainability, likewise, it's what you're already doing. It just documents things like water conservation measures, water recycling, and so on. Groundwater protection pulls together all of the diverse requirements that are already in place through the county. It has to do with things like protecting recharge areas, protecting wellheads from point sources of contamination, that kind of thing, procedures for construction and destruction of wells. These are already codified in existing standards, and the groundwater plan, management plan refers to them. And then planning integration is the final one, and this ties into regional planning documents that you are probably aware of, the Santa Barbara County Integrated Regional Water Master Plan, or Management Plan, excuse me, Santa Barbara County Groundwater Management Planning Efforts, et cetera. And with that said, I'm going to hand it back to Susan to complete the rest of the presentation.
The next slide deals with fiscal impacts, and there are no future costs associated with the adoption of the plan. And in conclusion, the plan does support the city's primary objective of working cooperatively with the basin stakeholders and the public to maintain a sustainable, reliable, high-quality groundwater supply for the long-term benefit of the citizens. And before the recommendation, I am going to give you the recommendation and then just also give you the correction. The staff is recommending that the City Council approve Resolution Number 5874-13, which adopts the city's groundwater management plan. And there is one correction to the plan, and it's a simple correction, but it's important for us. It's on page 311 of the groundwater management plan, and these are all in different sections. It's Section 3.3.3.2, and it's called "Water Recycling," and it's in Section 3 of your plan. So it's Section 3. The individual section, again, is 3.3.3.2, "Water Recycling." And on that page, the second sentence, and I will give this to the clerk, and it will be in the document as it changes. The second sentence will change. The regional wastewater plant will be abbreviated, so it will be, "The Lompoc Regional Wastewater Reclamation Plant uses recycled water where appropriate for onsite dust control and irrigation." And that's important for us, because even though the plant is capable of treating to a tertiary level, we don't have the permit at this time for recycling. So that's why the language is in there, and it will be in the changed document. So at this time, I'm going to read the staff recommendation again, and that is that staff is recommending that the council approve Resolution Number 5874-13, adopting the city's groundwater management plan. And I, and Ken, are available for any questions.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Just a real quick question. How long is this plan good for?
Ken, I don't know.
It's outdated.
It's outdated already?
What is that saying? As long as the grass grows and the wind blows? There is no limitation on it in the Water Code, and it's your plan, so as your situation as a municipality changes, you would want to review the plan and update it as needed.
What would be a change that would cause us to have to update this?
Something that might change that we would put in here is if we had additional agreements. Ken had mentioned the settlement agreement and 89, 18, and so forth that are documented in the plan. Those are real specific and important to us for water rights. If we had additional plans or any changes to those, we would definitely want to note that and document them in there.
So basically, every five years when we do our urban water plan, we would do a review of this at the same time to make sure they're parallel? Is that how this is monitored then, basically?
That would be at your discretion. I think the way that, if I remember correctly, Susan, the way we wrote it was to not pin you down to a timeframe, but I would think that it would be prudent to do it on some regular frequency. And the, you know, the nexus with the urban water management plan is a pretty, pretty good one, I think.
Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These two questions are scenarios that are probably very unlikely, but I just want to ask the questions anyway. In this report, we mentioned the Bradbury Dam, the agreement we have with the water coming down through the dam. It mentions in there, as long as these agreements are intact, as long as these agreements are honored. That concerned me a little bit. What is the possibility of these agreements not being intact and not being honored? I mean, that would, that concerns me.
That might be a question for the city attorney.
Well, yeah. Since it was in there and it's stayed that way, as long as...
I would say that one of your local experts on that would be probably Bruce Wales, who's with the Santa Inez River Water Conservation District and has been involved with the river issues for quite a while. But anyway, I think probably the one that's on the radar screen for the city and other local agencies would be the biological opinion that would be written based on Steelhead, and it would define the flows for Steelhead rearing, and that could affect flow in the river, and hence groundwater recharge in the Lompoc groundwater basin. And nobody knows how that's going to turn out until the BO is published.
Councilmember Lingle, we should know that all too well from our conference, because a lot of that discussion took place in regards to the electric utilities that are affected by that. And that's a great question, because I was curious if that would have an effect on us, and it sounds like, depending on the result, it may.
And I want to mention one thing that you would definitely be informed, and we have, I think most of you are aware, we have a specific law firm, Somax Simmons &amp; Dunn, and they work with the water rights issue, and we do coordinate with our city attorney there. So we are following those issues. We expect these agreements to stay intact, but we certainly follow them all the way, and we'll consistently do that.
Okay, thank you. Then my other question comment is probably even more unlikely, but just want to get it out there. A couple of years ago, we had a terrible earthquake in Japan. We actually had tsunami warnings here in the Lompoc area. What would happen if there were a tsunami and our water plain was flooded with salt water, seawater? I mean, how does that affect our water supply?
It's always a little bit dicey to try to predict Mother Nature, I think, but I would say, I'm a hydrogeologist. I work on groundwater as part of my professional position. And I would say that the conditions in the Lompoc Plain are such that as long as the water, if that terrible event occurred, the tsunami would move onto the plain and then move back off, and it wouldn't be there long enough on the land surface to create the deep percolation down into the groundwater basin, one would hope.
Okay, thank you.
We'll just have to call and have them open the dam right away and then wash it back out, you know. Any other questions?
No question, that makes sense. Go ahead.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I do have one question. In discussions with some members of the community, I know that this is something that has been brought up in the past, and I think that there's current discussions about the potential for development in the Sweeney Road area that's adjacent to the Santa Inez River. And I know, it was, I just want to confirm that this would be correct. It would seem as though we would just have to maintain sort of inter-agency discussions with county, with the county, and make sure that, you know, essentially, we're not dividing a resource that we need to utilize 100%.
That one threw me off initially, but that's actually a really relevant question, and that's one of the things that I think that hopefully you will find useful about the plan. And it does have sections on land use. And so there's one that deals with review of land use plans that would be put forth in the City of Lompoc, and then there's another section that would deal with review of land use plans that would be put forth in the county, in the surrounding areas that are in your groundwater basin and would therefore potentially have an effect on you. And now you have written, you have a written goal, you have written basin management objectives, and you can use that to guide your comments and your position with respect to future land use changes.
Thank you. And so I just want to be sure that the city, you know, we say rest of these things, and that I think this council is very open to being proactive when it comes to making our opinions known when they impact things such as our groundwater basin, as important as that is. So, thank you.
And I would just add that, on behalf of the city, I've spoken twice with LAFCO with regard to the Lake US states development and constraining them within what they've already been granted rather than allowing them to expand out. So we've had a position with regard to that over the long haul. Anything else from the council? Seeing no one, I'd open this to public comment. Anybody out there want to talk to us about a groundwater basin? Not too much interest. Okay, we'll close public comment and we'll come back. So let me see if I can summarize this, make sure that I've got it all down right. Our well levels have stayed within about 20 feet over the long haul, so we're not in overdraft. We continue to be about the same. The total dissolved solids over the long haul have declined a little bit, somewhere around 80 parts per million, so it's getting a little better, not a little worse. It gets a little better when the river flows, and it gets a little worse when the river doesn't flow, and so we can all go home and have another glass of water without much fear. Have I got that pretty well nailed down?
I'd say you nailed it.
Okay, good. All right, any other council member have a question? Yep, Councilmember Hohndahl.
No questions. It's interesting, I've been, I went through three of the floods that Lompoc Valley's had, and it's good to have the contract we have now on the reservoirs that we have releases year-round instead of all at one time. And 68 flood which hit us twice, two 100-year floods 30 days apart, is because the water was dumped on us all at one time. And if you really want to see flooding, the whole lower Lompoc Valley was flooded. And I had three ranches that were flooded in that process. I love this plan. It looks real good. We've got it laid out real well. And also, what I'm really appreciative to see is the amount of water we still have underground. We're not in the problems that past rovers have. The two outer areas, which is Mission Hills and Vandenberg Village, they're looking good, too. I'd still like to see the difference in the way the water quality at Mission Hills is so much better than the water quality at Lompoc. But it, there is a major difference where that water comes from in that area. I think this plan will set everything up that we need. You've done a beautiful job on laying it out. But I think the idea that a lot of people don't realize is that when the contract that was made with Bradbury Dam and the dam's releases of water that allowed the water to come down all year long instead of all at one time when the dam was full, has made a major difference on the water in the lower Lompoc Valley. It has improved, and by bringing that down all year long when we can, we've got water. That's also brought down the salts in the water. And at one time, we were 2,000 parts per day, undissolved solids in the Lompoc basin, what we were trying to do. That's why the water treatment plant was built so well, so he'd get a better quality drinking water. So this plan lays it out. It gives us everything that we really need in the future, and I always go back at it. But we've done it, so, and we'll have to fight for it.
Anything else? Seeing no further comment, I'd accept a motion.
And we accept staff recommendation to approve Resolution Number 5874-13, adopting city groundwater management plan. Now, do we need to put that amendment you put in there? You had an amendment that you wanted to add. Is that all part of it?
Yeah, just say "as amended."
As amended, then.
I'll go ahead and second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing no one, no likes, could we vote, please? That passes 5-0, thank you. And written communications? You still have to speak.
No written communications.
See Dwayne? Huh? She has to talk now, too, just like you. Oral communications, this is your opportunity to spend two minutes telling us about anything. There are no talkers tonight, none. Okay. Counsel requests comments and meeting reports. From the left.
Last week, I attended the NCPA Annual Conference in Tahoe, where, Councilmember Lingle, I think he has something he wants to announce about the award that the city received. I don't know if you want to hear us about that. You know, I have to admit that NCPA is really a fantastic organization. They stay on top of it. Every time I attend one of those events, I feel more secure about our electric utility. It's really amazing the work that they do there. So that was a great experience. I also attended the Dorothy Jackson Family Resource Center celebration, which was just getting the community aware that there is a family resource center, and there's a family service agency in our community that provides many services. You can find more information about them online. And lastly, this is the first council meeting since my niece was born three months early, so I'm going to use this to embarrass her probably every year for the rest of her life, just so thankful that at three months early, she's in her little incubator, but she's doing okay. So happy birthday, Everly.
Councilmember Hohndahl?
The week of the 18th to the 20th, I was in Sacramento at the League of California Cities meeting. We had excellent speakers and real good programs. The one, the two different programs, the Art of Vision, he was a keynote address, and the gentleman Eric Wall, which was an interesting comment where he started from when a kid in school, in elementary school. His teacher said, "You never learn how to paint because you can't paint within the lines." But he, so he didn't paint. But he, so he didn't paint, and then he went out and kind of had some financial problems. He decided to go back in, and he's a fantastic painter. He's able to tie it in, go out there and look at everything after you're not tied within the line, so you can spread yourself out, and fantastic program. And the other one was, the gentleman's name was Dr. Lowell Catlett, and he was same thing, talking about, and the first time I've ever heard it, we always talk about, "Look outside the box." He said, "There is no box. We're the ones that set the box up, so there is no box." When you're looking at what you're wanting to do and run a business or run a city and such, don't worry about being in the box. There is no box, and just start from there. And he, his presentation was excellent, so we had a good one. And then, of course, we had, our top priority one was a gentleman who's here from Lompoc, and his name is Kurt Lattapow, and he put on a real good leading change in new reality. And I told him what up there, I'd have to put the same program on here in Lompoc, but he did a beautiful job, and I let you go ask him what he talked about. But it was the idea of what we have to go through, bringing in new personnel, or how we're going to change, or do we run personnel the same way we've done for the last 50 years, how we set programs up. It was a very excellent program. And there was others, but I'll leave it there. But I was very pleased, I haven't been there for a while, and the programs they have were excellent.
Councilmember Starbuck.
On 20 February, I attended the POW MIA ceremony that was done by the Air Force Sergeants Association, a very well-done ceremony. I just wanted to comment, what a great launch on Sunday. Reminded me of the old days in Lompoc, yeah. And I'll see you all on Saturday at the Fire Station Open House.
Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended several meetings. Let's see, also with Councilmember Costa, the Dorothy Jackson Center, it was what, last night? Yesterday, yeah. Last Saturday, I was at the Vandenberg Air Force Base for the Airmen's Barbecue. I observed, I believe we served over 1,000, probably about 1,200 airmen and their families. Nice, they called it a Santa Maria-style barbecue, but I was reminding everyone that you're in Lompoc, this was a Lompoc barbecue, so. Anyway, they enjoyed it. It was about 1,200 airmen, almost at sailors, yeah.
You know, Bob, if, the way you correct that is, you see whose beans they're using, and it can't be Santa Maria-style barbecue if they're Lompoc beans.
It was probably Lompoc beans, yeah.
It was.
And then also with Councilmember Costa, I was at the NCPA Annual Meeting this past week, and that was out, there was some city expense on that. They paid for my transportation, just transportation. Lodging was taken care of for me. And that was it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Well, along with Councilmember Hohndahl, I attended the League of Cities, and I'm not going to cover the same things he covered, so I'll add on. On the trade show floor, there were a number of companies talking about apps for cities, including one who does one basically for free, another one who does one almost for free. So I brought back literature from them, and I turned it over to the Economic Development Committee. And there was also a company that does downtown light post banners, and I brought that information back also. And then in the awards category, there was one for Crescent City for their redirection of panhandling and the public education campaign and ordinance, and they were nice enough to send it all to me, and I forwarded to the city attorney to look at. And in addition to the chief's outstanding presentation on the future of fire services, there was another one, and it basically dealt with the evolution. And I want you to know that we here in Lompoc are quite a ways down that evolutionary trail because of our chief, so good things are happening there. The doctor, he talked about, was one of the speakers, gave some interesting statistics. In 1970, the U.S. economy became the first trillion-dollar economy, and since then, it's gone up a trillion dollars every 2.55 years. Today, the top 195 countries on earth have a total, including the U.S., have a $70 trillion economy, but the net worth of families in the United States is $72 trillion. So our family net worth in the United States is greater than the world economy. And yes, no-box thinking was definitely his look, and he said, "Leader up and be a change agent." I was out for the SpaceX launch with some of their people who were holding their breath because they had been told it had a 60% chance of success, but I think everybody saw it, and it was truly amazing. It's the biggest trail of fire I've ever seen. Last Saturday, I attended Recovery Day in the Park, sponsored by 12 organizations, and they gave out 1,000 free hamburgers, and a good time was had by all. And I represented the city council a week ago at the Lompoc Unified School District Board Meeting, and I gave them the economic overview, and then also chatted with them about the CNG Fuel Project, which our engineering department has been helping them with a little bit, and also pitched to the board the concept of giving us an easement on Fillmore School to replace well number seven that's getting kind of old and tired. So the staff is chatting with them about that. There was a job fair at the Vets. The good news is, there were a lot of people there, and there were a lot of employers there looking for people. The bad news is, there were way more people than jobs, so I know all of us are dedicated to bringing more jobs, and we'll keep working on that. Went to the Leadership Lompoc Valley Kickoff for their new class, great group of people. This is a program begun in 1986, and it was the economic overview again, I'm getting good at that one, and also a little discussion of leadership. And then last night, something truly fun, was Victory Outreach's 20th Anniversary in Lompoc, and it was honoring Pastor Ruben and Vera Tamaio, who came here with a refrigerator and a couch to save those in need. And if you remember way back, they drove around town with two loudspeakers on top of their car preaching, and handed out flyers at the high school. They rented a space at Chestnut in A, and as I would walk home from work late at night, I would stop by on the corner and just listen to them sing, and thought, yeah, what a glorious thing. And it was amazing, the stories of the lives that had been saved. So that was, that was amazing. Coming up tomorrow at 9:00, the Lompoc Valley Parks and Recreation and Pool Foundation will be receiving a $12,500 matching grant check from the Chumash Tribe at the Tribal Hall in San Inez, so I'm inviting everyone that wants to come on over. We really appreciate the Chumash stepping up. And the chief talked about on the 5th, his Fire Department Open House. We also have the Lions Club Dinner in the Dark and the Filipino Club Banquet. And then on the 6th, for those of you who would be interested in working on the next co-op, we have the Green Broom Co-op now, and there will be a lengthy discussion of what to do next. And that'll be at St. Mary's Church at 3:00. Everyone's welcome. And then a little reminder, for those of you who may not have known, that we will be having a party for Laurel's retirement on the 11th and at the community center, and so if you haven't gotten signed up for that, please do that. And now I would ask all the council members to join me over at the podium.
Mr. ... Okay. We'll come back. Okay.
So it's really impossible to thank someone for 20 years of their lives and all the things that you have done, but we, staff conspirators, and I tried to figure out what we could do. So yes, we have a cake outside. You may have guessed that, because when the going gets tough, when the going gets tough, the tough get cake. But, so we were trying to figure out what we would do with a plaque that would be anywhere close to thanking you for what you've done, and so in addition to your plaque, you have a key to the city, so you can come back and get in anytime you want. And this would be the third key to the city that I presented as mayor, so you're in a very select group. So on behalf of the council and the staff, and most importantly, all of the citizens of Lompoc who you've helped for all these years, thank you so very much.
You don't have to give a long speech.
Cake time.
You got the attorney first.
I just have one more comment.
Okay, go for it.
Mr. Mayor, I failed to announce one other thing. Councilmember Costa mentioned that there was an award at the NCPA meeting, the annual meeting. It wasn't actually an award presented at the meeting. It was, it was announced at the meeting that Lompoc, the city of Lompoc, our utilities, our public utilities, mainly the electrics, had received a five-star rating, and Larry, you could probably tell me exactly what it was, I forget the name of it, but it was a, we received a five-star rating. The important thing about that is, there are only six public utilities in Northern California and six public utilities in Southern California that have received this five-star rating. And basically, this five-star rating, it evaluates the performance of our utilities. And when I saw that, I told Councilmember Costa, I wasn't even aware that we had received. It was during the past year. So since we did not announce it then, I thought this would be a perfect time to announce it, and we should all be proud of our utilities here in Lompoc. So, thank you, Mr. Bean.
I think I, I think I see a future agenda item where Larry could come and tell us how I were five-star.
Larry's trying to figure out what it is.
Anything else? Last chance, city administrator. You get the last chance of the last chance. Anything you want to say?
Thank you again. It's been a thrill serving the city of Lompoc, and this is beautiful. Thank you very much.
Therefore, the Lompoc City Council will adjourn to a regular meeting at 7:00 PM or earlier if we have a closed session on October 15, 2013. Thank you. And let them eat cake.